Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin our city council meeting with a prayer and a pledge. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have to deliberate the city's business. We ask you be with us, be with all our citizens, be with all our city workers, public safety officers, keep them safe and in your will. We ask this in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call for us?
Councilman Tibbs, Councilwoman Bench, and Mayor Protem O'Neill is excused, Councilwoman Chlorus, Councilwoman Moore, Councilman Balls, Councilman Clark, and Mayor Browning. We have eight members present and one excused.
Thank you, and just a reminder for the audience and fellow council members, if you will check your phones, please make sure that they are in a silent mode, we would appreciate that. Also, due to a couple incidents that's happened in the past, if you were to happen to use your cellphone in the audience, that is just fine, just make sure you have the backside flashlight turned off. It is very bright up here, so when you're doing like this, we see a bright light, so please, if you could just check those for us, we'd appreciate that. All right.
Yes, we are at announcements, and I have no special announcements this evening. Therefore, we will go into personal appearances.
Thank you, and just a reminder for personal appearances, the speakers are limited to three minutes. The purpose of a personal appearance is to address city council. Speaker shall address their remarks to the council as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. Questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific council members. The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business and not to deal with individual personalities. And with that, why don't we move right on?
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is John Ecklin.
Yes, my name is John Ecklin. I was here two weeks ago for the city cemetery, and they finally got back with me. Two weeks? I'd like to know why it's so long to get back with me about that. Thank you very much.
Speaker is Patrice Boerwehr.
Good evening. I am Patrice Boerwehr. I am a resident of the city of Saginaw, and I am founder of Project Unify. I am here to speak on the installation of playground equipment that Project Unify has been a recipient of through the Board of Education, and we are so elated for the donation after four years of asking, but now we have a situation where we need to install that playground equipment. And I just want you to know that we have been doing a series of fundraising to help defray the cost. We have a couple of estimates for $15,000 each, and that includes the disassembling, transportation, and reinstalling the playground equipments for both Unity and Veterans McKinney's Park. I am excited. We just, we had last month, we did a benefit bike ride, and I am happy and thankful for the CMA Faith Riders, Christian Motorcycle Association. They were the only participants, and I was so thankful to see that outsiders are embracing what we're doing, but I was saddened to know that our own residents was not supportive. We have been working very hard. I don't know what else we have to do to prove ourselves because we have been diligent. I am really excited about the changes that has been made to Veterans McKinney's Park and also to Unity Park. I just want to encourage everybody, residents, to just, you know, take some ownership, you know? If you live in a city, I think that we all should have some type of responsibility of how our communities look, our neighborhoods, where we live. Questions are always asking what, you know, the city's doing. The city, in my opinion, I'm okay, but Phil Carwatt and the Public Service Department are awesome. I might get on their nerve a little bit because I ask a lot, but I ask after I try hard to do what we can do first, and progress is being made. So, I know I have seven grandchildren, and I would love for them to play on some equipment at either park. And I know everybody have children that need to be at a park. Energy is just overwhelming, and we can do this. Now, we just finished the benefit. It was the lockup. I am so, so happy about that. We had an awesome time. I just want to let everybody know who participated, that it's not over yet. You still have until Friday to get some bail money in, and we will continue to fundraise. But we're asking that everybody will participate. Come by the park if you have not been by there. I just want to just say thank you for this opportunity.
And Mayor, with that, we are at remarks of council.
All right. Just a reminder, city council members, of a five-minute limit for that, and tonight we start with Councilman Tibbs.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Boerwehr, thank you so much for your activity. I was over at the park, I believe that was Friday, and it's looking good over there. I just say, keep up the work, and if there's anything you think I can do to help, please let me know, and I'll be happy to see what I can pitch in. NAACP had their annual dinner last night, awesome event, great powerful speaker, number of our council members were present. It was a great event. Friday, Parents Murdered Children had their annual tribute. They want me to extend a thank you to the city staff for working hard on that proclamation I was able to read to them. That proclamation means so much to them, and they just want to say thank you. They just, they feel grateful that we have not forgot about them or their loved ones that were tragically killed by violence. I'd like to congratulate the Police Department for an effective use of the PSN grant. I know several guns, as well as multiple drugs where I've been taken off the streets in the last month or so, and just keep up the good work. Thank you so much for your hard work. And last, I'm volunteering for Reed Saginaw County again this year. Basically, you could take 30 minutes out of your week, volunteer in a school, and you get to either read to or have a student read to you 15 minutes out of your day, or excuse me, out of your week, and it's a wonderful experience just to sew a little time into some kids and also help them increase their reading ability. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody, and Ms. Boerwehr, I think I owe some money. So, I don't know if you're going to be around afterwards, but maybe we can settle up or find out what the deal is. And with that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to say thank you to Ms. Boerwehr for all you do. It's tremendous. Just keep it up. I want to thank our police chief, our Sergeant Maydi from the Police Department Communication Office, Reggie Williams, as well as VA Hospital Security Staff for an event that they hosted on Wednesday, which was really quite exciting, which was a, basically a training course using the, checking out both the range at the Saginaw Police Department, tasers, beanbags, seeing how they work, what they do for our officers, and then the simulation at the VA Hospital was quite enlightening when you see what officers face out there and the literally split-second decisions they have to make and sometimes don't even have that amount of time. So, it was very, very educational for me as a councilman, but also as a citizen, to reflect on what our officers face every day and how important it is that we provide a place and a means for this training. It's so critical. So, thank you to all those who've made that possible. On a little more musical note, Saturday, October 17th, as our mayor, I'm sure, is aware, at 8:00 PM, the Saginaw Bay Symphony Orchestra will be having its first concert of this season, which is actually the second interview concert for our potential, for our candidates for the music position, the music director position for the symphony. So, if you are at all interested in helping choose the next conductor for the symphony, this is a chance to be there, hear Conductor Platt perform with the symphony and to give us your input as well on him as a candidate. We have four more coming up through May after Alexander Platt on the 17th. So, I'll probably try and remind everyone again of this next week when we have our next meeting because it is an exciting season. With that, Mr. Mayor, I am through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, citizens. I'd like to thank everybody for coming here today, and especially the citizens that came and with their comments, and especially you, Patricia, and I completely appreciate what you do for the city of Saginaw. Those parks are magnificent. I was not able to attend. I do have an eight-to-five job, but I must admit, my money got there through a couple individuals. Thank you, Annie and Mr. Campbell, for taking my money down there. So, you know, whatever it takes to make the park and the city a better place, I'm all for it. I was at the NAACP dinner too this, yesterday, and it was a magnificent dinner. The speaker was Dr. Calvin Mackey, a PhD, and he talks about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and he's been doing this all over the world. This guy's been talking Dubai, Japan, I mean, all over the place about engaging our children. And he was so passionate, passionate about what he does, it really sparked a plug in me because I'm in the Big Brothers and Sisters program, and I understand what he's saying. And he said a lot about, about everything should be centered on the children, the parents should be taking care of that, and then the elders should be helping them out too a little bit. He said, but the way society is so messed up today, it seems like the elders are trying to take care of the children, and the parents are not there, and we need people to come back in our communities to help out. What they do with STEM in most of the cities is they come in and get a gymnasium or something like that on Saturdays, and all the people that's involved in science, technology, and trades, and engineering, they come to that particular center and spend like four hours and engage the children from all walks of life. And just to see the Rainbow Coalition there at some of those meetings, you know, he was telling us about it, it really inspired me to want to get involved in this, knowing that sometimes kids just need to have some hands-on stuff, and they need to have some consistency with parents being there. By me being in the Big Brothers and Sisters program, I have a hobby where I build decorative waterfalls and ponds and stuff like that, and every last one of my little brothers helped me build a pond. And now, I'm sure they're going to go on and do the same thing when they get older because they have some hands-on experience, and I'm there all the time with those guys, you know, consistently. They know they're going to see me at least twice a month, and then we're going to talk on the telephone three or four times. And you'd be surprised on what that do to a kid, where they can have an adult, a middle adult into his life who spends some time with them. And I'm really excited what the possibility that STEM could bring to the city of Saginaw, and I'm more excited about I'm going to be involved in that. I'm sure some other council people probably be involved in that too, and I'm looking forward to us doing that in the city of Saginaw so we can bring some hope to our children. Because I think that's all they really need is hope. We got too many people that are telling them no, and then you got other people giving them dope, you know? So, hopefully by us giving them some hope, they won't have to use the dope and feel like that's the answer, you know, to all the problems in their life is to drown those situations. So, I'm really looking forward to that, and I hope that a lot of other citizens would ask about STEM and see if they want to get involved in it too. I'm really excited about the city of Saginaw. I notice a lot of things happening here. I haven't heard anything about Delta College, maybe we can get a report on that, but just the things that I see happening in this city. I had an opportunity to go to the farmer's market a couple of weeks ago, and I could not believe the activity that's happening up and down Washington Street during that time, you know, people going back and forth and lunching and attending there. It really makes me feel good to be part of this city and the exciting things that's happening here. I feel like it's a renaissance is coming up amongst Saginaw, and I'm glad I'm here too, so. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any other comments.
Good evening, citizens of Saginaw. First of all, thank you so much, Ms. Boerwehr. I too had an opportunity to be at the NAACP affair last night. It was fantastic. And Mr. Councilman Balls is right, him and Councilman Tibbs, it is something that you just got, you had to hear him to fill it, and Annie was there last night, so you have four people representing the city there last night, and it was just phenomenal. I mean, they said this was the first big full house that they've had in a long while, and the place was packed. The place was packed. On November the 14th, NBC O'Leo, which is the municipal, which is the Michigan Municipal League Black Caucus, will be hosting a city forum. Chief, we will be contacting you to see if we can get you on our panel. It is going to be a summit, and we're inviting people to come, so that's just a little tidbit for now, and it is not just the city of Saginaw, it is NBC Leo. A lot of the other members are coming from other cities to support us in this endeavor, and so we'll be looking for our people to be here to show up and show out. Councilman Balls sits on the committee with us, you know, he had eight to five, but I keep him posted on what's going on, and so we are really excited about the things that are getting ready to come. NBC Leo is also going to try to work on some other activities in the city. Other than that, that is it. Thank you.
I have no comments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Since I'm going last, I will try my best not to be too repetitive, but, oh, second to last, I'm so sorry. But, Ms. Patrice, thank you so much for everything that you do. If we had more citizens who had your attitude and your determination, we would be leaps and bounds ahead of where we are right now. I participated in the lock-in, and till Friday, I am definitely accepting bail money if anybody wants to contribute to, to me, that would be much appreciated. But I hope it was a success, and I'm looking forward to hearing how well it turned out. I also want to thank my fellow council members and staff for the successful farmer's market lunch we had two weeks ago. Debbie and Vicki put a lot of effort into making sure that it came off without a hitch, and I really appreciate that because it certainly makes council endeavors like that a lot easier, and I'm just very appreciative to everybody who came out. Saturday, we had the AIDS Walk 2015, and they exceeded their amount from last year by $3,000, and I just want to say thank you to, again, staff who joined the team and made contributions, and it made a difference, so thank you. And I was at the NAACP banquet last night, and it was a fantastic event. The speaker was just incredible. But I specifically want to mention that Larry Campbell and Ana Hidalgo, who I'm sure I think everybody here knows, were honored as NAACP heroes for all of the things that they do for the community and their neighborhood, and I personally can't think of two people who were more deserving of that recognition other than maybe Ms. Patrice over there. So, that's all I have, and thank you.
Couple things. Thank you, and, Ms. Boerwehr, I am on the hook for that. I hope I don't get arrested, but I certainly am out fundraising for you, and we'll see you after the meeting for this also. Thank you, Councilwoman Annie Bench, for taking the lead on the farmer's market initiative, and also for Deb and Vicki for all their work. There's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scene that we don't, people don't realize, and so much of our staff does so, so much stuff that we just don't say thank you enough, and I certainly want to do that for all our council members. You know, I, last week, I was up at the MML conference, and I can tell you, after setting, listening to other mayors and city managers, boy, I'm glad where I'm at right here. I tell you, this is, this is good, we don't know how good we have it some days, and I just thank the staff and my fellow council members for the fine job that you guys do every day, and so I really appreciate that. I was at a event, and I had a citizen come up to me and make a complaint, a very boisterous complaint, and the complaint is in reference to the construction around the hospital, and this person would not stop, and this person had a, another person into the car trying to get that person to the hospital because of an emergency. And once they got to in eyesight of the hospital, it took this person almost 20 minutes to get in, and I just, and then when I was done listening, this person went around to many other tables than anybody else, and I thought, I just, you know, there's something wrong here. And so, the following day, I drove that route, and I've never seen anything so well-marked in my life as we have marked it out there, and I am publicly going on record saying that when we came down Woodbridge or Mason, it didn't matter, there's a huge orange sign that says, "Emergency room traffic, follow the detour." I followed the detour, and at every intersection, it directed me right up to Michigan and said that the street is open for emergency traffic. I had no problems with that. Now, I'm probably going to catch hang for saying this publicly, but I, this, I think this person panicked and just did not look at the signs. And that's a big project we're doing over there. That's going to take a while. I think we got, I think we got a few more weeks, at least a few more weeks over there. A huge project that goes on, and people don't understand that the amount of work that goes into this infrastructure and our aging infrastructure that this city is faced with on a regular basis. I thank goodness we're not in the situation that Flint is in right now with their water situation, and it's my opinion that that will never, never go away because apparently the lead that they're talking about is not from the water, it's from the pipes. And if that's from the pipe, that means all infrastructure would have to be replaced. That means, yes, and you can imagine the cost of that. And so, when we work on our infrastructure, we need to keep that in mind, that it's aging, and we have to do as much as we can to update that as often as we can. So, with that, I, Mr. Carwatt, thank you, and thank your staff for the well markings around the hospital. It is well, I'm going on the record, it is well-marked. You just got to look at the three-by-five sign that is orange and is sticking out almost in the road, but not quite, but it's there, and so please, please, thank you very much. So, with that, that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at reports from manager.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for mentioning the construction markings around Covenant. I'll tell you that Mr. Carwatt and his staff did work closely with Covenant Hospital to make sure that route was marked, so it's a joint effort on getting that route put together and well-marked. The STEM education discussion that a number of you saw, this is something that both Dow and Hemlock Semiconductor and Delta College have been working on for quite a while in the area, and there is a great program at Delta College that I've mentioned before that I believe it's in excess of 80% of the students that go through that program would be employed by Dow or Hemlock Semiconductor. I know the mayor, mayor went to a discussion we had at Dow. I'm on a committee with Dow that highlighted that, and it's there, and at one time, I believe even the State of Michigan was paying that tuition. I don't know that they still are, but that's a program that does need to be publicized more, and we'd hope that the Saginaw schools help to steer kids in that direction as well. Delta College is, we are working with them still on their location, but they are waiting for the State of Michigan to determine the funding. As I mentioned before, half of the funding for that project would come from the State of Michigan, so about $6 million, and you might be aware that they're working on the road funding issue right now, and that's their number-one issue, and it's likely they're not going to tackle any other type of funding issues until that is completed. So, it's somewhat in a holding pattern, but we would expect that they would hear in the next six months or so about that funding. When we're talking about parks, we have a number of citizens that do a great job. Patrice Boerwehr does a great job with the park there, and we also have a number of other groups, Friends of Hoyt Park, which some council members are involved with, Northmore Association with Dindorfer, and a number of the other neighborhood associations, and city staff is also working with, I believe, a couple of our council members, Councilman Tibbs and Councilwoman Bench, on Friends of Wick's Park as well. So, we really rely on a lot of citizens to work in the parks to help maintain those, so, you know, I send a thank you to all of them. And I also would mention that our staff, when we can work on parks, a big focus is that Celebration Park area. After, I believe it was last week, or actually the week before last, we did have a ribbon cutting at the new boulder climbing feature in Celebration Park, and if you go down there, Mayor Protem O'Neill was filled in for the mayor on that ribbon cutting due to the MML conference, but if you go down and look at that park, it's pretty amazing, the transformation that's been there in about six years, and it's, the city has used, has been very creative, I think, in utilizing funding from the DNR to really repurpose that park, and also with our staffing. Of course, as you know, we don't really have a dedicated Parks Department like we used to have, and the planning of that skate park and the splash pad was actually, a great deal of that work was done by our GIS Director and Engineering Technician about four years ago. So, we have been very creative, I think, on funding and managing of the parks, but if you haven't had a chance to see those new features, go down to Celebration Park. Phil's staff did a great job on the new pathways and just linking from Anderson and Garber Courts all the way to the skate park and the YMCA now. And I'd also encourage you to look at the city website. Our city staff, SGTV and Castle Museum, produced another video on the Grove neighborhood, historic video, and I think the first one that the city did with the Castle Museum has our most hits on our website. So, something that people enjoy, and it is on the front page now. And finally, the last thing I wanted to mention is that the Saginaw County Board of Commissioners did establish, or they have, an Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee, and they had a public meeting probably two weeks ago as well. Councilman Clark and I attended that, and there are a lot of good projects and I think possibilities where we can work with the county and some of the other villages and townships. One of the main issues that we discussed was the road, countywide road funding village that the Road Commission is working on now, but there were also a few other items, Region Five Prosperity Initiative, and also IT Technology Services that were discussed, discussed among the group, so I think there's some possibilities there, and if they have more public meetings, I'll make sure that everyone on council gets it, or we get it highlighted to you so you know when and where they are. And other than that, I don't have any other items.
Question for the manager. Madam Clerk?
We are now at the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city's website, also on SGTV Channel 190. Channel 191. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Moved.
Has been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none. All in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, your next item of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Are there any council members that have committee reports for us? Any council members committee reports for us? No committee reports? Okay. And do we have any appointments?
Yes, we have a reappointment. We need council approval to reappoint Daniel LaPan to the Saginaw Transit Authority Regional Services with a term to expire September 26, 2018.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Bench?
I just wanted to let everyone know that we did meet this morning and had a chance to review that application before sending it to the full council.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Being none. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next order of business is resolutions. We have the one this evening, is to adopt a resolution to establish the city of Saginaw's credit card policy.
Council members, I need a motion to adopt.
Support.
Has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Being none. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We are now at motions and miscellaneous business.
And does any other council member have anything before the council? Councilwoman Brenner Moore?
No. Last night, we were at the NAACP and I'm just asking council if we might possibly be able to, it's a delay reaction, to actually give a resolution or a proclamation. Dan Kilde sent one and we didn't have one for the NAACP.
This is an annual event that goes on every year?
It's an annual event.
And we'd like to do one for every year?
We'd like to.
Just automatic?
Yeah. Because this was their 45th.
Okay. But that's fine. That's fine. We'll, I'll contact staff and see if we can, it'll be late, but we'll see what we can do.
Thank you so much.
Any other business? I was very fortunate last Friday to be down at the First Merritt Park with my brand-new Saginaw Spirit jersey on. I want you to, and I want you to know that my number is 75 because of the I-75 Coors Light Traveling Trophy. And during the comments, I mentioned to Mayor Walling on TV that we were going to show them how to do some real skating that night. And subsequently, you didn't do a good job in the penalty box for the other team. You should have kept them in there longer, but 3-0. And then we went down there and actually lost in, in overtime. There's only eight games total and they've taken the first two. I'm trying, I'm keeping my spirit up. I'm, 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 I think we're going to pull her out, but I'd like to see some movement soon. So, congratulations. That's going to be nice between Flint and Saginaw, nice rivalry coming back and forth. A lot of people remember the old gears and the, and the, what's that? The generals and, and the old gears. Chief, you'll appreciate that as a police officer. That's the only time as a police, as a police officer, to be paid at a spot and not have to break up a fight, forbidding it was on the ice. We didn't have to go out there. So, I appreciate that. That was really nice. But, so congratulations to both them teams and things going on there. Council members need a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Been moved and supported. All in favor, signify by aye. We're adjourned.